Si sa lin de is treba.
One of the minister is still on the way. Can we patiently just give him another five minutes before we can start? Critical, highly contested labor. So indeed we want the list to be all here so that the critical issues raise by the community of Eden. Can be taken. Thank you.
Damen und Herren, wir warten noch für alle Panellehrer, um auf die Dach. Die Achbarerminister des Norden. Also dazu unsere Frage, die Sie jetzt blieb reden, doch mit wach. Man von Dach bespricht uns bei. Opene, endet es bei vor, das ist namens Landbau, Arbeit in Grund. Uns will Batergrage, dass all die Panellehrer den Wurde gut wies, um Frau auf ihre Antworten zu kann verschafft. Danke.
Man nenne na man nenne kazin. De anit kere okom zuzwa na skes liende. Si sa lin de ab. Zwa. Kuniyanze leki du babafi ke. Okend.
Good morning, morning, hui amore. Bonnai. Du melang. Can we all rise? Can we all rise?
Singa paga maso ke de tuna.
Danach ist es blieb auch mal ob sein. Ist um dennoch von stiller Gebete.
Ma. Am zuzwa ko.
Stre. Engo. Sette sie blieb. Mein Name ist Goody, ich bin der Vaku. I'm a pro.
Digoka.
Da. Ich sehe alleine, ich muss meine Medien direkter. Go.
The deputy chair has.
Kann es jetzt blieb beginnen, der Erkenntnis. Den Wurde hat von der Achbarerjung Vorsetzer von.
Man di kare go ku tapela, osh toni pekle yo usseke la salo we punga.
Honorable Tao with. Honorable Zokwani.
But. De okas zotkwa na okoyo.
The executive mayor.
Yo kulumas pala. We.
Who is also a panelist.
Was von der Achbarerpaneele das.
Aye unen akreba.
Economic development.
Mature landpo and economic development.
Na yeh ongo uanga melle. Ongo kuwel ngelo es pam kwaba.
And welcome all honorable members that are here.
Welcome auch in alle Achbarerlehrer, was hier den Wurdig ist.
Diwam ke de onke amalu, ongo asoni pekle yo akoyo apa xasanji.
And I want. And.
An yellow but here.
Palulegeka ku lez koyo apa paga ti kwe. Sanji.
Personnel.
Nabassanenzayo. Sayo. Ka e kumbinel pezu.
Come to the public.
Five hours. For word, but handle word landpo.
Namkelekele ku len tetan tetana isa kuweka ma yela ni mo.
Labor and land reform.
Arbeit in. Grundherformung.
Eszomi sebezi, neszomi shaba.
It is a most interesting. And highly contested terrain. The land question.
Das ist ein von den interessantesten und auch mit betwister Gebiete, die Grundfrage ist.
Gumba okapazela longku luntu, lu vagalele kambe umba okungu. Ke ne, nesemisa.
It was also carefully selected that today will be dealing with agriculture, land and labor. Because they are interrelated. Connected.
Das ist auch vorsichtig eingewerkelt, dass von Dach mit Landbau. Und Grundherformung soll werden, weil alle ist, alle hätten mit mikaar te doen, en alle is inter verweef.
Okfanele kleyo. Es. Ba, nes dobelung isan, nes entsebenzo. Ngoba imi ba yonke engolumene. I.
And the theme.
The theme.
Panzi kondoko wunkrim.
Protecting the rights and livelihood of the farm dwellers and workers.
Of winners and the winner could see.
Lam. Nempuno zabemi, gofanele kleyo.
We're made from golden sunshine, 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 we're made from golden sunshine.
Good morning, morning, hui amore. Bonnai. Du melang. Can we all rise? Can we all rise?
Singa paga maso ke de tuna.
Danach ist es blieb auch mal ob sein. Ist um dennoch von stiller Gebete.
Ma. Am zuzwa ko.
Stre.
Engo.
Sette sie blieb. Mein Name ist Goody, ich bin der Vaku.
I'm a pro.
Digoka.
Da.
Ich sehe alleine, ich muss meine Medien direkter.
The deputy chair has.
Kann es jetzt blieb beginnen, der Erkenntnis. Den Wurde hat von der Achbarerjung Vorsetzer von. Von Provinz ist.
Man di kare go ku tapela, osh toni pekle yo usseke la salo we punga.
Honorable Tao with. Honorable Zokwani.
But.
De okas zotkwa na okoyo.
The executive mayor.
Yo kulumas pala. We.
Who is also a panelist.
Was von der Achbarerpaneele das.
Aye unen akreba.
Economic development.
Mature landpo and economic development.
Na yeh ongo uanga melle. Ongo kuwel ngelo es pam kwaba.
And welcome all honorable members that are here.
Welcome auch in alle Achbarerlehrer, was hier den Wurdig ist.
Diwam ke de onke amalu, ongo asoni pekle yo akoyo apa xasanji.
And I want. And.
An yellow but here.
Palulegeka ku lez koyo apa paga ti kwe. Sanji.
Personnel.
Nabassanenzayo. Sayo. Ka e kumbinel pezu.
Come to the public.
Five hours. For word, but handle word landpo.
Namkelekele ku len tetan tetana isa kuweka ma yela ni mo.
Labor and land reform.
Arbeit in. Grundherformung.
Eszomi sebezi, neszomi shaba.
It is a most interesting. And highly contested terrain. The land question.
Das ist ein von den interessantesten und auch mit betwister Gebiete, die Grundfrage ist.
Gumba okapazela longku luntu, lu vagalele kambe umba okungu. Ke ne, nesemisa.
It was also carefully selected that today will be dealing with agriculture, land and labor. Because they are interrelated. Connected.
Das ist auch vorsichtig eingewerkelt, dass von Dach mit Landbau. Und Grundherformung soll werden, weil alle ist, alle hätten mit mikaar te doen, en alle is inter verweef.
Okfanele kleyo. Es. Ba, nes dobelung isan, nes entsebenzo. Ngoba imi ba yonke engolumene.
And the theme.
The theme.
Panzi kondoko wunkrim.
Protecting the rights and livelihood of the farm dwellers and workers.
Of winners and the winner could see.
Lam. Nempuno zabemi, gofanele kleyo.
Can I also please be the 8th part of the floor, please? The honourable members join the other colleagues. This is a command for the 8th party, let the other colleagues have some answers.
I assume that I can start talking because you didn't give the other people the choice or address them and say that... So I assume I can...
The president, he can begin to talk, because he has not given the other people recognition right?
Thank you very much. Can... I just want to raise by the member of the provincial parliament that the panel is not... there's nothing in the constitution that lays the rule of what, who must be on a panel of a public hearing. The public hearing is here to listen to the people and the panel will listen to the people. And if an executive member gave the mandate to a person that he asked to be on the panel, that should be the case. Other thing is, negotiated or not actually negotiated, discuss this matter for 15 minutes before we started. And the feedback that was given back to me is that it is in order. Now, if this is the way we are going to conduct the further procedures, we will follow that up later on. Because this is not the way of cooperation between spheres of government. Thank you.
The president, I will not say that the previous meeting of the provincial parliament has said that it is not only legal for the meeting to do over the panel, and I will not emphasize that, because the ground rules are not being determined. What, how, where should the panel be open to the open bar? And furthermore, in the specific person mandate created from the people, let's say, the outgoing said that the person said to do on the panel. The political leaders, the president, that we discussed this before the time, and we discussed this for 15 minutes to give clarity on this, and in the time, not that it is not what we have agreed with then we will go further in later time.
Honourable members, I'm going to hand over to the honourable deputy speaker. Just for five minutes to address you. Thank you.
8th party, I can only ask for the president to handle it. So it takes five minutes for you to speak.
No, thank you very much. The opposite. The opposite. And in doing so, let me first apologize to the minister for having availed himself in time to engage with us and the community at large. May I therefore, minister, with your indulgence, just request the chief whip of the legislature, the NCOP, the programming just for a quick two-minute discussion on this particular matter so that we resolve it politically? Because this is a political matter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Return of the host. I would like to ask the minister first to speak. That he is well here, to be with us and also the public, without working the three important things. But I would like to ask, the NRVP and also the provincial legislators, if one of them can come to work together, for a few minutes, so that we discuss this? Thank you.
Apology for this inconvenience. We are now just...
Thank you very much, Jefferson, our program director.
And of course, once more, on behalf of National Council of Proletary Provinces, I would like to speak for the workers, for the workers. And certainly, I would like to say that... But I would like to say that I am not in our own selves. Therefore, the decision or the outcome from the meeting is as follows one. We all agree, as political parties and the whips, that the panel will comprise of members of the executive who must give responses to the people. It is not a victory of anybody. It is not somebody who has lost the debate whatsoever, but it is an amicable solution that we found because of once we build on a wrong precedent, then it will be difficult for us to correct it in future. Whatever that has happened in the past, it has happened in the past and therefore moving forward, it is a landmark. So therefore, the decision is that we will request the honourable member to herself from the panel, the provincial, for an alternative member of the executive. Any member of the executive from the legislature, uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. It's not a victory. It's not a victory for anybody or for anything, and we shouldn't look at it in that context. It's a political, amicable solution that we found necessary in order for us to move forward. So honourable member, may you excuse yourself so that just we proceed with the meeting, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would like to say first to speak. Not to speak for the president, but to the special members. I will... I will not speak for the president, but to the special members, the members of the provincial parliament and the members of the NRVP who are here. And also, we want to apologize. We just wanted, we just had to come to an agreement. And I will not say that the resolution that we got is not winning. That is a lucky coincidence that we achieved. It was all in our agreement, that the outgoing said the outgoing said the members themselves to answer the question. And therefore, we came up with a proposal that the 8th party herself has to speak for. And this is not a win for anyone, this is a coincidence that we have made, so that we can continue on the right way. Otherwise, we will get the wrong president. Thank you.
Alright. No, she is a deputy, oh, co-chairperson of the program director. As a program director. So please, at the point when she has to introduce herself, she will introduce herself as a program director. Assisting honourable sefako. So therefore, we will proceed in that manner. Thank you very much.
She is a program director. When will she herself be recognized? Will she herself as a program director be recognized? So we will go there, to continue. Thank you.
We are now going to start. Can you please get ready for questions now? We are going to take the first six questions. And please, don't preamble. Make sure that you go straight to your questions. Can we start taking the first six questions?
We will start. We will have six women on the floor. And we will ask you, let's be careful, to make sure that you are not too long. That you are not too close to the point, so that you can ask a question. Thank you. We will start now with the first question.
The roving mic, please. You tell us who you are and where are you coming from, please. Continue.
I am the chairman, the committee members and all the residents present.
I greet the president, committee members and all the communities members who are here today.
I am the chairman, I am the chairman of the council. I am the chairman of the council.
My name is the chairman, I am the chairman, and I am from Bongoletu, here in Outzoring.
I am shocked not seeing the agriculture MEC present amongst us.
I am shocked that the land building LER is not today here today.
Because they are addressing you, not asking you questions regarding agriculture.
Because we want to refer our questions directly to him, asking him questions relating to agricultural issues.
But we will ask the people who are involved in land building directly to Omrich.
We are working on a transformation of agriculture in Western Cape.
My first question is about transformation in the Western Cape province.
My first question is about transformation of land building in the West Coast.
Why Chinaband, Bamnyama, Singapore... Not place in higher positions whilst we do have necessary tools?
How come white people are not posted, while we are scared of the danger?
My second question is about ostrich.
My second question is around the ostrich industry.
My second question is about ostrich.
Chinaband, Bamnyama, I am the chairman, I am the chairman of the council. Tinabandu bam nyama si tati u kandu waga ye unya i responsibility ba masi, masibe involved gi ndo ye unga ye unga niba zaalapa e outzon.
We black people are not involved playing a part in ostrich matters here at outzon.
Ons zwart mensen is niet betrokken bij ostrich verbanden angeleend hier in Outzoring, nee?
Asis ba asikuazi uku fama ge unga niba sia kwazi kaifanding asin niwa i Western Cape agriculture walapa e outzon.
It's not that we cannot farm in ostriches, but it is that the Western Cape provincial government is not offering us any assistance that we can play a positive part in this industry.
Het is niet dat ons niet ostrich boeren kan wees, nee? Maar de geval is dat de westkappelijke provinciale regering niet voor ons een gebeist aan verdien zodat ons zo gerold en hier die neuburit kan spelen, nee?
Thank you very much, it's two questions per person.
Engosi kaku. Ben gayaz, ik kon ja je question ekte belan funa je guza, ben gayaz.
I'm sorry, I just have one final last question.
Ik is ja maar ik toch niet een finale vraag?
Indi beneficial riaka Vuka Sense project.
I am a beneficiary of the Vuka Sense project.
Si kache kwa itin district municipality u funa u si kupa. Si funu guza ba uzo si soya pini poko nenkomo zetu.
We are employed by the district municipality. They want to dismiss our services. We ask where to are we going to go with our livestock?
Ik is op het beginste van de Vuka Sense project en ons wordt in dienst genomen die de district municipality. Maar helle wil ons nou afdank of afleen en ons vrouw waar gaan ons nou ons levensmiddelen vandaan krijgen?
I district i di municipality ya ba kinesen labanda bam nyama apa e Southern Cape.
The district municipality is really oppressing. Oppressing black people here in the Western Cape. Unfortunately, white people are believing that they are the only ones that needs to receive all the benefits of the country.
Si kusungu kaku.
We are greatly disturbed. Thank you, thank you, thank you, you have made your point. Only two questions per person, thank you.
De districts van die valleiht is rijdig. Is rijdig wees om mensen te onderdrik. Zwart mensen te onderdrikken en ongelukkig gluur die blanke mensen dat helle de enigste mensen is wat voor onderstel is om voordeel te trek.
Ik gruw toemora die parlement, ik gruw die mensen wat me kan hoor. Ik is een zeventigjarige vol wassen kleiling man van Outzoring. Ik taan toemora hi ongepraat.
Good morning, I just want to greet everybody from the parliament and I also want to greet everyone here who can hear me today. I am a full grown seventy year old colored man. I'm here to greet the parliament this morning.
Indi ya obulisa onge umzingo. Inga kumbi amalunga epa. Dim talan enga mashumi astrendre. Indi ya vuela ukbalapa din bulsa noenge.
Aseksho kaita antineka. I was no twenty four was i grand is.
Grandi chonga amalunga namabina nesine.
No, any ten years the time eda bayo merwe.
Last ten years, a lot of.
I mimia ga eli shu.
I'm by anymore.
Singa kumbi.
What a story.
Your own community and you don't.
I. Ra umele oganya kupana se.
Van daan antineka di parlement, harika fra omi mene te help. Ma ala matani bewonte dabua. Harika. Mene te help, ma ala moet helpi.
So now. Asi funu ba npez proto. Wa siabona abanda basheli pangapati uku.
No, we ek toemora di parlement fra.
Now what I want to ask the parliament. This person.
Indwe. Tonda kukbanga ba asi.
Ta kan ol. Ta. Aanbu krija hekta anbu. Anambla kno di kan bu.
So now what I want to ask the parliament is by when are we gonna answer?
Eyon. Tonda namsha, impendu loz. Auzanini, kwa ya si zaungetakala nini, azee ba funa unga eto.
Two minutes.
Wa ni minister.
Suzyako emi bini ipelile mplekazi.
Ek taal mi ne brief wa ni minister. Wa ons skebera giet dat ons alle antwoord krij. Ma na wipak onsel bedag ons.
A letter he wrote to us, but today I'm gonna ask you to please give us a answer today on this issue.
Apesandensam di pete ingwa di esipa lelu. Iswa, indi funa ukobu. Ulo amalunga nalelo. Lelewio namsha.
Next, please. Where is the mic, please? Give. Microphone. Can we please get some silence in the audience?
Ik gruw di pad heel. Si wapi.
I greet the panel of the N C O P.
Di albulisi konga lebunga lesiswe la mapondo. En die totale gemeenschap van die Zuid Cape wat vandaag hier geen woordig is.
And the total community of the Southern Cape who are present here today. No lundu la la pesal den cape polukoyo apa namsha.
On sitt in die Zuid Cape met een bijo groot probleem wat landbouw betreft.
We have a very big problem with regard to agriculture Cape. Apesal den Cape si felinen ngaki engum mangaliso. Gok mayela nezolimo.
Groent reforming. Find. In die westkappe.
Land reform is.
Kei engukulela yesim. Hij haardraakseer wanneer ik naar die tv kijk. En ik zien hoe dat. Hier in.
My heart pains when I look at the television and I see how things are happening in other provinces. Daugchon. Bonana. Inkubela ekweka. Ma ye amapondo.
En vooral in die Zuid Cape was daar. Die dorp. Was daar plaatsen geged. An. Wat.
That you don't get any assistance from either national. Or local. When you. U funa inkubela pambili. Gokkuze fama.
Is dat helle.
Have with Eden District. Basan da wengesa kunge talan obaba ya ztegi. The question is agriculture won't take place. Abayonke. Kukoka nyengukuledo. Yes, ina kuletu.
Prinskes baat nie bij die voorham van die regering. Vooral in die.
The poorest of the poor are not benefit. From government especially in the Western Cape. Imbula kalucha. Subekilayo. Abanan. Funu. Kam. Akulu apa kuelila se Western Cape. Involved in a court case of the Eden District Municipality and I've just, I've just come from the court in fact. Ogakadoku zeninajala ediltokayo. Indi. Unzeni di.
With specific. Alienti. But in fa di persona in die voorloop to di sak. Sit op pi pa deal. En ei ek fulais ba voor word deal. Darum ek ni di sak.
Minister to give attention. He's involved in the run up to this matter and I feel that that person is prejudicial. Andi zukus begelba alintonga zamzoku. Kotwa kekwanelo ba umpatiswa kayalapa dimazi. Zengo ba nikopenga pambili apo mplekazi. Omne waba. Waselekayo. Usingaye undinajala. Nan ko ekale ni kwe. Loo ken ku se dolo pu wa se etenbe. And blood from the. Fire. Enda wen ba. Ne nati. Uya. Dula esitense. Ah no. Thank you very much.
Ik is logi kla nu, ek let praat.
Not done yet, I just want to save the evictions. Okto lan kate wati. Mayela noktu dulu akwe tu. Pickler app.
Settings. En helle moet nou van. Na twintig jaar wat. Wat in wer kan.
Evictions are not taken seriously, per person has a family he has a mom. Lu yakweke kututulo sito. Naminyaka kuifama. Unongoskazi. Bana. Kotwa takunamza. Uya tutulu aphe.
Die workerres of di ka, maar di pers. Ni di. Brief gescreven. Engels.
And gets in this person does not understand the content of the letter. Ya paka mila. Apa. Ipale ingwa da uyado. Lomtu akai konti nende. Etta. Goba sisin gesi. A. Ondu luimi. Nete kayongaye.
Nou, die man wordt nog. Om die plaats te verlaat. Werke, hij kreeg nie inkomsten, nee? Hij wordt een sekere bedrag, nie bedrag, reg verdag, nee? Dat is net voor kos. Nou, dringend kijk na di type proces wat kabiernu.
This person is now being forced to leave. He has been offered a minimal amount of money as compensation, but this amount of money is not even enough for him to afford a Wendy house that he can stay in. It is only. But he has to leave the. Does not have government to pay specific attention processes. Uya tutulu alomfoku tuama ka ambeklo fama. Oni kwe into apa ekutwa imalana. Ayone langa impuno zake. Nokba anganenzu. Kotwa kutwa kapume.
En alvulek nee. Oorak afstaan. Dat habel den dringend gekijk wordt na bij ising. Cause mensen, havelas. Van a agrivillage. Daske nu groent voor a agrivillage. Maar daaworti werk maakandati.
And then before I close, I just want to request that urgent attention be given to housing for our people. At some point, there was mention made of an agrivillage. There is enough land available for an agrivillage, but nothing is happening in this regard. Mapkola sele imme koyenda uzalaku. Betu. Kwakwe basa uboneleluangeli nyuthuba. Kotwa kunanamsha. Nelleluwa. Noko maikola selwe in di ma. Lo ban du.
En anterselde tijd squin dring water.
Same time also clean potable water or drink water. Thank you, you have made your point, can you get the next person, thank you very much.
Dank je tipend komar.
Engosi engosi yenzi de in di mayako, engosi, engosi.
Aba Eden stan ruwtaan kan nee? Dat staat in die jaar, dat moet by die mens, na die mensen. Maar dat doet. Hasselik afstaan.
There are large green drums standing at Eden that contain, that can contain many thousands of liters of water and these drums are standing in the backyard and they have people so that the people can use. Edin kuki mikomemi koli amanzi amep. Ngakunonu ba bebesuaya. Ba ko.
Salut, molue. And my name is Glenn.
Eh di pa etu.
George. Ik is geboren achtig twentig. Ik is geboren in negentien achtentig.
Ja skafa etu. Na kulo nyagu pelileyo.
Last year. Year. Maar soweel. Norderheid verkaag schwees.
Yoma li.
Eighteen. En us het geen sek. Fang ni ons wachstijds.
Abantu baga tut. Even.
People from two thousand and seven. Is wachne ses. Seder tu.
Imalia bo ku 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 ni kwe.
Umkwinti si v such mani. Un. Blikwa rge. Ni ri rge.
Basaula imalia bo kwango tisemba.
That was in December, to ons sekere fonse mosontfang. Maar ik gruw het nie amal sekere fonse gekraai nee?
Ya ti office basa ochaula. Kotya ne.
The office told us that we will get it on January. Ik antuera ti fonse gese ons al i gelda in janier ori ontvang.
Goba itesha selpelile.
Time of. Marie. Estreke.
Naleke goka group four.
Even the fans for group.
I am. Ligat.
It's the same situation like the. Thousand and four. De situatie asentuera is intensi.
Gugu peti. Gli office yom sabase etu.
It was Mr Nero who was in that office in George.
Sa ti maga tritje.
Down from the office. Onspisimaniert.
Kalpalo lekunti. Kotwa.
Because he was racist as he was a colored guy. Now Anelda is one in the position.
Na ye ken gokuensa langi besenziwa guneero.
He is doing the same thing that Mr Nel was doing. En iselfte ding wordt nou gedoin wat der manier nel gedoin was.
Goba. Basaula. Bonke.
Because all colored.
Gogo gogo gaba. Koye.
It's only the black people who didn't get their. It's niet die zwart mensen, maar niele fonse ontvang nee?
Umane bo pama ban de.
Kat.
Esayo.
He will say you will be. Man.
Donya.
Fulne man betal wordt, maar wanneer daari man anbrek kren.
Ge maliki. The. El tesha. Si ya sita bandu.
People must be. To the onsinzu. Taking their. Lot nee?
Je.
Sa colored guy is being racist amongst. Vanda.
Goba swunu imma.
Now. Like to know. Now what us.
Papa kwelli dise. Omshop en om nyama.
From this land. Want. Kleilingen wit.
Ik is. Ik is. Martin.
I'm Yakubus Martin.
Ik is. Martin. Lasting betaler van hieri groot Outzoring.
I am a taxpayer from Outzoring. Menskap en. And also my unemployed community. Ya mulela umchanga pambili. I komiti yonke yega pambili. Nabantu betu abalam bileyo. South Africa belongs to. Who love in it black and white. Said Africa bewerten amal bedaren lieve zwart en. Abantu. Umzansi Africa. Shopen abam nyama. We, I thank our icon Niles Mandela. Di al. Afrika. En Freedom Charter. What signifies my voice is my constitution. And all. Unyalam. Nelu. Olam endina. Ik is. Be careful because you are a long preamble. Thinking you are too imminent, thank you. Yes, protector for. Itesha lakole kus taza in detwen. Kala. Polo.
Ik het ik is werkloos van seder tweeduizendnegentig tot tweeduizendveftien.
The problem that I have is that I've been unemployed from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen. I ngaki. Lan danze wenzook suke la. Unyaka out two thousand and fifteen.
Ik het van tweeduizendnegentig tot na to et. Ik bij Outzoring. Sted het sei.
Up to now, I have at Outzoring Municipality. Or. District Municipality. Suke lango two thousand and nine zotika. Gukbenzolo kon diset.
Unser lees van die land is Vuka Usenzele.
We're. Being. Usenzele. Be si sebenza ku vuka. Senzele.
Ik het van tweeduizendnegen.
From two thousand and nine. Two thousand and nine. Di ken da. Azama ubane si shini lam. Lokusambi moto apa etzolweni.
Ik is die enigste basis in Outzoring.
Wash. Was. One six white. Pa etzolweni. Nokabama basambi moto. Abam shoppe. Ap. Batu.
Ik sittans op een stuk groent. In Saint Johnstraat van Eden District Municipality. Er groent amister Vanwek. Een wit. Van Outzoring.
Seven years, this land.
Beworden nee? Mister Vanwek.
But was rented by Mister Vanwek. A white. Rented of outzoring. Yele minyaka is hulaya lomshaba musfudula. Ik het eerste september te gaan andoen met Mister Vanwek.
Van die perseel en probeer uitvind wie hier die perseel. Hij het mij onder de false voorwensel gebracht hier te se. Hieri perseel, hier ei bij Eden District Municipality.
And the first. I went. To go. Who is brought me under false pretense and told me that he was renting. September. Vanwek dambo swan banina lomtu. Okeshan salomshaba okeshan ban kulomas.
Ik het hier van tweeduizendran van eerste september. Benne gun.
This particular. Dat talis. Sektempo chaula. Amawakamabini. Dina sones chito salenda.
Drie maanden. Om Eden District. Bij amte naar neer van wek is die. Ge. Wette praat en. Ik hier betaal hier. Ik het helle voorzien van kopies van betalings van tweeduizendran.
Three months. Officials of the Eden District Municipality came to the. Location, came to the place and they wanted. Me what activities were taking place on that place as I was renting it from him and he would be able to. But in the end.
Ik het mij gewend nam. Ik zeg het.
To our executive.
Meneer Godfreylo.
Mister Godfreylo.
Om nomzanau. Ik het hier in de december dat. Werksangeleentheid, ik employtans zes vanis en gedrang. Ik het kinne. Ik het een vrouw. Ik het onmiddellijk. Neer van, gevolg van die false voorwensel.
And I'd received a writing, a letter in December that told me that my business was in danger and. Employing six people. And then I went to Mister Vanwek and I informed him. We akta bazela. Abantu wama batanda tu. Andi ba keshi. Diengoko. Anda bonana nom nomzanau.
Beskik voor een brief van Mister Vanwek wat hij in vijf. Op die perseel, perseel was in Eden. Ze belange geweest voor afgelopen elf jaar. Ik het foto's gevat van die plek, ik het aan Eden District Municipality. Se mayor en meneer Wessie van de Weste is een voorho. Die foto's van die plek voor elf jaar, die plek tot niet gegaan, die afdak is af. En ik probeer dat. Ik probeer. En wat is die wondelijk om die hier wat ik aan Mister. Om die hier aan Outzoring Municipality.
And I have in my possession a letter from Mister Vanwek that was written to Eden District Municipality in which it is explained that I am currently running. On that particular property and that the property had been there like for eleven years up to then and time as I took. And I also. Wrote a letter and inquired from Mister Wessie van de Weste and what the possibility would be that the rent with regard. That I can continue providing job opportunities for the people that I'm employing in my. Indi enda. Anda talan. Bakaze la. Imali endi shaulayo. Nabantu andi bakeshileyo. Di banika imi sevensi. Nabakaze la. Konke okukunde shaleyo.
Na anleding van mijn schrijver van januari. Mayor, Eden District. Mayor, die M M Godfreylo. Ik het geen joy gekren, ik het mij gehaast na die van gebruik hi die perseel. En ik geloof in waarvan ik onder false voorwensel. Maar ik zeg het. An.
Also attached to. La. The. A. Red. Tuakole.
But I, I have winter. Allee, dat is bestifige eis, maar tukken geen maar, I get nog next. Moving. Brandhouse is boarding for. Per de herai met. Like most round beweer, I get to in twintig tachtien eis en vangen mijn deila park. Uh, only after I received the house, it was at a later. When my partially blindness, that people were supposed to fence my. But up to now, nothing. And people in the community or in the neighborhood are just look. House as a rubbish place because everyone is take, they put it there and it's a. Surroundings. To not attack my eyes and vang it was at work, obi pick tight to. Ampere heeltemal blind was and tu is I can geleg. Paining om mijn eis geplas. Maar dit is glad nie gedunne. And now. Genskap kijk naar mijn eis is een roos.
Oh, no, but. Wait minute here, I think we.
I don't get everything. Due to me, I'm told. This is for this, I see that I joined is the. Now I can add the OTM to go on my. Find I that alles. Is nie door. And. I verdeilig word is die poles. Met die geld wordt alles doorien gevat.
Thank you, thank you very much, you made your point, but also the. Issue perhaps go to the table there. Now is this, we'll start with the district. Negative mayor to respond. Thank you.
Uh, Chair, thank you very, very much for this opportunity. Um. I think before I answer. Questions into context.
To I as burgemeester, die Eden District. Et was begin met een negative balance. Of. Brandt.
When I started as the mayor of Eden District in the red.
Of twelve million rand.
And it's necessary that we need to take in account that our. Potential share. Only grow with three percent every year.
It's work nourish that us moet zien that ons verdiensten niet met drie percent groei and.
And one of the responsibilities of executive. Is to make sure that he stay in charge of our sustainability.
Verdag kan ons zeggen dat ons de municipal clean audit verleden jaar.
We can say that we took our, we took it from the twelve. Negative balance and we improved it.
Wat bij interess. Ons. Und ik ons dat daarbij van ons eindomme wat plaatsen maar ook gebouwen insleid der mensen geheer wordt.
Very interestingly, when we. Started, we discovered that a lot of the properties we have, including some of the farms and rented.
And dit sleid richtig. Clear and. What bring. Interessantste was, daar was in twintig elf mensen wat zo lang laat als tweede en twee. A cent betaald voor die plaatsen en enige bouwen wat helle beset.
And now this includes all races, found that since twenty eleven. Have any rent. Paid for where they are staying.
Uh, burgemeester het, het opdrage gegeven dat daar onmiddellijk. Ge doen wordt na al.
The command that we do. And then I found that a certain property that. They owed a six thousand rent per month. Up until that.
Who omte keik who dat ons, hella can help and who dat ons the problem can oblie.
Because they were small older farmers, I held two meetings with them. Assist them and to see how we.
Problem, leech ter hier. Ni net doet wendig bij die hieri. Maar in dit onze te pracht. Als hij is op. Die, die break. Daar ingesit en as hier. Anna, meneer Barnat, meneer Barnat die helle betaal voor die onder verheerin. Helle nooit a cent aan die municipalite betaal nie, maar een helle tover. Barnat nog gevocht voor liter gehe.
The problem is not only with regard to the rent, but it is also a matter of vandalism. There were certain fences that were removed for instance, and then there were, there were cattle that were wandering around on the street. And also those were removed and then the floors for instance were removed and then they were. To a Mr Barnat. Paid rent to them, but they did not pay a single cent of the rent of that rent over to the district's municipality.
That's ongeluk. Daar was corruptive activiteiten en geen persoon wat gloo in school in regering kan zikke activiteiten tulaten.
And that unfortunately is the situation, that there is corrupt activity and there are corrupt. Taking place and no person who believes in clean governance can allow such corrupt activities to take place.
Is in the bestime.
Onch ons en kan ik net die volgende zeggen. To I burgemeester de woord was een van mijn eerste op die plaatsen in een karroe en hier wordt verzwaardt bemachtigingsprojecten. En ons staan verdaag nog bij daar bepaalde besleid. Oosters tanswiesig medie hanni bush tea project samen die departement.
We should set aside. Farms for black. Is a. Honey Bush Tea that is happening here in Oetje to graze. We are speaking to small black, small holder farm. So that they could. For their cattle. And. They we would like, and we are sticking to this in this fashion. Point three million rand that they've been made, that they've made. Us so that we can.
Car wash van land. Area van die gebouw. In die area wordt verheer. En om een.
It is a parking area where it's allocated to a specific. It's the first point.
Ik wetig verloer, beste onwettige handeling en het. So I is bij jammer dat dat ons. Wiesig is om voor mijn ander te helpen. A car wash gebruikt chemicalien. En ons is verantwoordelijk voor municipale gesondheid. Hartnoep in die waad. In, in andere mensen aan de einde van die dag wordt ziek en daarin vraas voor om gesteld wordt als die a car wash wil heestes wil doen.
I also want fashion because Mr Van Veek went about business in an improper fashion. But I also want to say that we are busy trying to find an alternative location for him, an alternative place where he can establish his. He has to bear in mind that a car wash makes use of chemicals and those chemicals. Run into. Supply where that of the rest of the town and that is very dangerous. You need, who can establish a car wash business, you can't just establish it anywhere.
Slotte zeg. Ik is als burgemeesters, als ik weer zal ik weer onderneming ma. Om weer. In gesprek te drieën en weer te kijk hoe dat ons die probleem kan aanspreek en hoe dat ons mekaar kan help. Ik is echter en ik wil het duidelijk stellen. Blikker, ik leef met mijn geweten samen, ik kan, is ik bereid om mijn gemeenschap ter alle tijden te dienen. As het binnen die raamwerk van die wit en binnen die raamwerk van die recht doen.
Just want to. Again that as my talk to the people and I will see how we can amicably, amicably resolve the issue. But I want to say that I sleep well and I can live with my conscience and. I'm eager to resolve. As long as we do it within the ambit of the law, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you once more join hands for? I will now hand over to my co.
Excellent.
To introduce. The honor of my just, that has just arrived, thank you.
Thank everybody more weeny, I'd like to recognize. Ivan May Western Cape and take the issues forward on land reform. Welcome.
Ivan Mayer.
Minister Sukwani, are you going to respond? Would you like to with the last session?
Thanks. And the blue chaperson. Members of the N C O P.
Namal lungu, eh, N C O P akoyo.
And also.
People in. The first question from Siabulela. I cannot. So, but I have taken note of your concern, but in. Information in Durens and the M E C admitted has not yet transformed agriculture. Had one person. Of those. Agriculture in the Western Cape.
And this time said I for. To November act weifel of energy. Other than that's what we call.
That are concurrent, meaning that it is not. Outline what has been allocated, which was supposed to be small. We gave one hundred million renz, not.
Hundred and million year rant.
Uh, we gave the western. Look provincial government sixty four million renz.
In us it free west cops, a place like a regering, forty six.
For disaster funding, we gave the province one sixty four million renz.
Sie koop bij i hundred and sixty four je million ze rant, ga ku ko intsekele.
The total allocation to this province was three hundred and forty eight million renz for the year twenty forty. The funds made available to ensure that we promote to assist small scale. To dream and realize their dream of. So. Check, this is one of. Believe that. As the national government, we would like to make sure that people are not only locked to one crop, but are diversifying their, their, their participation into crop production. Animal or. Livestock, other. The second question did not, I didn't hear his name. Is, is, is. Land reform claims. Eighty but people not being. The funding. Thus that. My co-minister and. Department and that will do and. Do will be to make them aware of this.
Like a nievendag.
Assistance and. They, 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 they are old. Not the third person.
Groet komer is wat ik nu.
And there's not to, to leave your. Like this, as I've heard. And like this in Durens where people partly but offered liquor in exchange of what could have been their salaries. And I will take this, the view of agri village processes with the minister of land reform. Proposed by the, by, 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 by the third speaker. Goba op portlani, I can only say that I will take the matter you have raised also on the east. A claims, claim funds not paid to. Eh, the speaker quoted the Freedom Chart and I agree with him. Municipalite could have the alleged practice of. Was not in my, that, that, that is criminal, he was supposed to have been followed. Businesses in what. The fifth question. One from um, 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 mama, um, non. Amen settlements, so. They have a follow up.
Then the last in the seeste froget ons vangit, all what I can say, I can requesti verwaaijner.
Where no mandate was given and conduct. In future. Upon to answer. But lastly, as a comment. Ever thought that in the Western Cape, uh, from a province that claims to be the best. Management. In terms of being clear in policies, the best of clean audits. What is the use of a clean audit when people are hungry, they. They have no food.
Thank you, I'd like to call on the honorable minister mayor to respond for the Western Cape.
Dank je program directeur bij, dank je ook voor hier die geleentijd om hier die. Word, ik gebruik graag hier die geleentijd.
Thank you.
Voorzitter, je weet dat. Kan ooit een translezing kreeg, dan dank je.
Thank you program director and thank you also for this opportunity to be able to answer these questions. I gladly make use of this opportunity.
I'd like to give Minister Mayor a chance to respond. We asked for a minister, we have a minister and I. Give him a response.
Thank you very much, program director, I've been. Some questions and since this is a public hearing, responding to the needs of the. I've been asked some questions, and since this is a public hearing, responding to the needs of the national onwiklungsplan still... Dat hondi ede mutskap.
Thank you very much. The national development, send million jobs in the agricultural sector.
Putu amasitale, one million ya matuba, evins, yavantu ba.
Ons moet darum, jais. I will give now the chair.
Excellent, Uranda, kan i...
Honorable members, if it's available, members should, let us know then.
Masizor.
That's kept umdari fra.
Questions, and I think it's only good to be able to, opportunity so that those questions can be answered.
Abantu baka yo, uk...
Onwiklungsplan, stelde ten doel, één miljoen werks geleend ede in die landbouwsector.
The goal of one million jobs in the agriculture.
Uswelonke imbonoya ke jigelale, makaswe mi tuba, mi seben... Teri ye miljoon.
Jais darum, allemaal in die landbouwsector lader.
Is in the agricultural sector so that we can alleviate poverty in the rural areas.
Genkayosos, faleki lukuti sibambaunye. Desilwe intuela, kanya oksalanzima ebantu.
Wat impacteer op landbouw, das water, ge en das voedselsecuriteit.
There are three factors that haven't, on food security.
Zindatu ngamanzi ngamanza, no kuwita.
En jais darum moet ons errens, regeringsvere, plaatselijk, provinciaal en nationaal samwerk om ons eie voortbestaan te verseker.
And it is for this particular and precise management of agriculture and that we have to cooperate with the heads of government, national and local, to be able to ensure our own continued...
Sebensekuñe, wesonke, emab... Ukwenze lindo ba, sikini se kainalo, okanyi meko, zezolimo, ziacolasaleka.
Die kressies wat hier an gesprekes, den... Transformasi van landbouw.
Inene indo, kajoleo, yaye sisonke, siaitasa lo.
Transformasi.
Transformation.
Candelo, imo apayo.
Won the national award with...
The Western Cape government is equally committed.
Teko kuwiti, bassebensa, ukubona kalisa im...
Jais darum, scops, department van landbouw, hundred percent, arm the condition.
Wat ons van die nationale regering krye om die project.
In that the Western Cape Department of Agriculture spends a hundred percent of the national grants that they receive from the national government so that these projects can be successful.
Ngengwa, tu lohulume de wasn't, koloni, aih hundred percenti. Kui mali epunyanwa, kuswelo, uva mayjongane nemeko, yeszolimo.
Ons werksam om landbouw te latslaag, van ons wel eerstheid Afrika moet slaag.
We work together to make agr...
Sisebensakuñe, ukupumeza, impumelelo, kwezolimo, goba sichonge, ek... Atja Afrika, ubenem pumele.
A gefra, naam de agri-village.
Questions we'll also ask about agri-village.
Verdaar in beweg, in landelijke gebiede.
Thank you for that, for those questions, because going in, in the rural area.
Da, simelewa si, bet...
We have spoken about this enough now, we must now go over to action.
Kutetwengo kwanne, goku. Da, goku, inwe fune kayogo, masbona, sebensa.
Da, darastansel even sfatba taitelatmak.
Feasibility study can realize it, so we can make it a reality.
Yapantu alokukwenzelukba kupini se kwe, uba... Gochengen to esgenene.
Agri Park Concept in George.
We also have Agri Park Concept in...
Nepaka eszolimo, esse kandiswa, alue okanyi meko, ya etjoti.
Unis agri village hier in Otsuwen.
They're also in this town when it comes to the concept of an...
Nessis tagona.
Gesamelijke beplanning der die Otsuwen Municipaliteit, die Department van Landbouw, as ook die Nationale Department... Of the Department of Human Settlements in the...
Twin, and also the Department of Human Settlements in the Western Cape.
Umaspala wase utoni sebe, leszolimo, nohulumente jigelale, basse...
Ek het volgende die... Om dari plana zelf te bezichte, das werklijke indike beidra tot behesing in landelijke gebiede.
I had an opportunity this morning, really a unique opportunity, to be able to make a contribution to housing in the rural areas.
Ndibonile ngokwa miskandisozok, sante, inene kusaliseka, masitale ke imeko, zindu apa, ko...
Binnen die breier context van landbouw, van o, e van se inzette, word in die westkop gewaardeer.
Within the broader context of agriculture and agriculture development, I would also like to thank Mr. Minister, his input and for his advice to the Western Cape because he says is incorporated in what we do in the Western Cape.
Divumelene dimbulis, senonpati, ngoba tinahulumente, walapa eh Western Cape, sisebensa, ngokubanbe na yo.
Dar kan ook, beonderstehend, wers, waarvan oor die tweehundert en vijftig miljoen rand bezichte ede en vooral voor nieuwe opkomende...
This year, an amount of two hundred and fifty upcoming businesses and also new and up agricultural enterprises.
Yerand is zama na yokba ma, imkubela, kwe candelo, zolimo.
Om dat landbouws word at ons moet zorg dat ons taken stel, succesvoler.
A critical, continued existence, it is important that...
Bassebensa, tele tele, kwe...
Uns, in darum...
This and I will now close.
Na, na Johnson, gubi show, biweso. The bush, agriculture here in Otsong.
Again, as the westkop van landbouw, Otsuwen, my name is Johnson.
Dat five, masna man, ama farmer. Candela was released, in we were promised that we are going to get land for... Sasi qualifying, renokesa, thousand umtu, ukuse ababantu, ibelinani labantu, abaz... Qualifying for fourteen thousand to be able to buy land and we're supposed to buy land as a collective.
Ons het gekwalificeer voor veertien, wret ons grond kan koop, en ons was beonderstehend...
Yaisa grunn van teni, op... Yaye ekamalake. Farm that I, I had was when you go to Congo Cave, forget the, the old...
Ango grote to gaan, ek vergeet nee die naam van, van die einaar van nou plaats.
Kandi nozawa, mokwato ngubelikronje, kwe, kubalo Jordan, esitu unepamfle, kya ngledis abantu kengama farmer. We managed to call Dr. Paolo Jordan so that...
Ha, you can un...
Organizer sa omlande, e airport, e George, nanofelikronje, sezana funyendo. We managed to get the transport, the place, the...
Touriniyani.